I told him I was making a big change. You know. He wants to go on the world as well as what they got right there.
Yeah, I guess. What's more the season than I probably ever had in my life.
Now, they're ready to get around and come in.
Seven hour time to be finished.
Yeah.
I'm delivering those things. Not watching me hang live.
Nine hundred.
I didn't want to watch.
I just watch.
All right, it's time.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, four o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Would somebody like to lead us in a prayer? Ed, would you do it? Would you, George? Thank you. Go ahead.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity for us all to be here today. Plus to the ones who fly through the county and are too responsible for the citizens. Thank you for the many blessings that we have and the opportunity to be here today.
Please, ladies and please.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the minutes. Have I had a chance to read the minutes? Any changes, corrections? If not, I'll take a vote to approve them.
So moved.
Motion by Ron.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
That was you, huh?
Yeah. Second by who?
Jerry.
And favor?
Second.
Hi. Jerry.
Hi.
Randall Lynn, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Judge Martin here.
I am.
All right.
I couldn't hear back there.
I'll talk later. Here's your need.
Do what?
Here's your need.
Yes.
Moeen.
Huh?
Moeen.
It's embarrassing.
It's all about you. I don't want to embarrass you.
I was gonna say it happened in the courtroom, so it was embarrassing. So, yeah, I'm just here for the, um, the secretariat regarding the additional appropriation that we needed for the jury funds in the amount of twenty thousand and for the language interpreters in the amount of one thousand five hundred.
I think we discussed this last month, so.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, concerns? No, I've entertained a motion to.
Motion.
Yeah?
We have to do two motions.
Oh, yes, we'll have to do two. So we'll go on the first one for the twenty thousand dollar one. One thousand two oh one oh one zero zero two six. Jerry made the motion?
Motion.
Ron seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on the second one. Ron made the motion?
I'll second.
Ron seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Probation department. How are we doing today?
Doing good.
Good.
Thank you. I'm considering this appropriation for some mileage money. Hopefully, my two juvenile officers, I've gone through it fairly quick since they've increased the amount that we paid for mileage. And we have run through what we have already, just about. We need a little bit more carries for the rest of the year. I'll give you the amount of my thousand dollars for this question.
And how we, uh, get to drink to the, you know, that?
We hope it's the year.
Is that about what you're on track? Yeah, or you need more?
We went through thirty four hundred dollars already. And then for the last month or so, it's been kinda quiet because kids aren't in school. The school starts early.
Yeah, I agree with that.
They're on the road every day.
Oh.
These are personal vehicles. They're worse than that.
Any other questions?
Same thing on that one. Yeah, this same thing here.
Yeah, I'm gonna advertise it. I've entertained a motion to advertise for five thousand dollars for the probation department for mileage.
So moved.
Mr. Brown, motion? Second?
I'll assist.
Karen seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
See you next month.
See you next month.
All right, Richard, your turn.
Hey, me. Here to finish up the business from last month. Do you have any questions about, or?
No, I agree with that.
Seeing a hundred twenty five thousand dollars for the tourism commission to carry on the signings and the conference for next year.
I get a question. Level of the, the, what we each say to, for that, that everything?
Uh, it, uh, that handles the initial part that we pay the company that's going to handle all this for us. That's their fee. They're going to advertise for the actual signings and the place we have it. So that's probably the seventy four thousand is kinda unknown, so we have to.
Well, I think we're not moving every post over. We're also gonna be on the front page of the, you know, the, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Does that, does that cost you any of that, or?
Absolutely.
That's last month's.
Last month's.
This, this month's.
Yeah, this, this week.
Again, I say good work, that can be nice.
Is that a, some of your work for the, uh, for the, uh? Should I accept that?
I was just kind of looking at all of them. I did morning logs and get them, unless there's any of us who's left.
Okay. Yeah, that's all.
If they have anything to say, they can. Anything to say back there, I'm done. I'll find out, everybody, that's all. Well, with that said, Dan, I've entertained a motion to approve the hundred and twenty five thousand for the flowers. To the county. Jerry, made the motion? Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Richard.
Thanks very much. I'm here, Dan.
Don, you wanna come up?
I'm here to request a transfer of funds from, um, my reassessment extra higher account to designation bonus from the general fund.
Twenty five hundred dollars. You say extra higher?
Yeah.
Sure you did. Anybody have any questions or comments? And I've entertained a motion.
Second.
Ron made it. Mr. Brown seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need, have a, do we need, do we need to do anything about appropriate, or could we do, or could we do that?
It's her money.
She made her money.
It's in her budget.
Mm-hmm.
But she wasn't, uh?
She might just move higher to, if they have a nice, uh? Okay, Stewart, you wanna come up?
Hi, Eric. How are you, boys?
Good.
I was here last month and talked to you about the possibility of getting new voting machines. And, uh, we've been looking at them, and they're fifteen, twenty years old, somewhere in that range, and they're pretty close to the end of cycle. So we need to start looking into ones. And so, uh, I've been talking to Microvote and to get a quote for how much that would cost us. And so he's here to, to talk about that. So if you guys wanna, if you, unless you have any questions for me, he can just go ahead.
That'll be fine. Come on up, gentlemen.
Right. Hey, I recognize some of you guys from years past, Jerry. Steve Shambles is his name, by the way. Yep. With Microvote, I was here twenty some years ago to sell you the voting system for use for the last couple decades. And then, I like treat this kinda like a health check going into the presidential election. It's always nice kinda get on the page and see where your system stands for the next upcoming years. About ten years ago, I was in front of you, and the county decided to reinvest in the system. It's about twenty cents on the original dollar to upgrade the system with the promise that it would buy you another ten years of life out of the system. And we're at that ninth year now, going into ten. Um, your system's fine. It's gonna work fine through the presidential election, and will probably work for, you know, several years down the line, too. But I'm trying to get counties in position that before the next presidential election in 2028, that we have everybody on the newest voting panel. The state has bought you new booths and bought you the paper trail device for all of your machines to go with your old voting panel. So, um, with that in mind, we've gone through quite a transition in time to now we're to the point where that old panel uses a three eighty six processor, the screens are no longer available. So any repairs that we're doing are from, um, used panels or parts that have been on the shelf for fifteen years or so. And so the, the progress of the panel that's made at this point, the largest leap is just, um, I have an example of it here. It looks like it's smaller, but the screen presentation is really the same. But the, the primary goal of this panel was to reach a higher security standard. Before, we were on a, you know, older based equipment, these sort of things, that we couldn't install certain security protocols that we can keep up to date with it. The machines are not in this configuration, they're not on the internet anyhow, so we're not worried about that. But at the same time, we are now using a Windows operating system to drive the, for the voter, the improved, the, the system behaves exactly the same way it always did, same buttons, same card activation. The difference is, is now when they make selections, you'll see that there's a pronounced color identification to the locations that they've made. Um, or the selections they've made, they can still change as they did before, move through the ballot. The color has really become important based on the race that you guys are often voted with, the county council, a large race, that is no longer attached to the straight party voting. Uh, like now, the current code only requires us to put information on the screen that says it's not attached to the straight party vote. But as we all know, it can often be missed because there's no highlighting of those choices as they're made. So now the voter would actually see a void in the ballot, selections that weren't made with that council, the large race. We'll see if they ever square that away. I don't know. That was a, kind of a patch, you know? They didn't wanna get rid of the straight party voting, so this was what they came up with. I think there's only six states in the country now that still have straight party voting. So we'll see if there's a long future with that, too.
Does that view screen, it looks to?
Yeah, we're not saying same, same size. The difference is, is the other one had a, um, kind of a uncomfortable level on the edge with a gap. And so it just could kinda had a bridge between the lines and that. So this brings, this level here brings it closer to the actual screen presentation.
With the actual viewing screen, so it's like.
It's the same size, yeah. Yeah, it's kinda surprising. And so, really, so that's where we're at. And so the way that Microvote, you know, I, the way I personally work in the company, you know, likes to work is to give counties a long window to prepare for large expenditures of this nature. Cause you can see it's, for sixty four panels, it's about a hundred and seventy nine thousand and two hundred dollars. And so what we, what we do with counties is, one, get in front of them, let them know this is coming. My, I would love to see everyone off of them by twenty twenty six, uh, but I know that's not realistic in a lot of counties. And then we also have the luxury, um, a lot of counties try to buy some and then add more to it, but we prefer to go the other way where we would go and take half the money in one year, the other half delivered in the first year. Because when you start trying to train poll workers on two different panels, it gets very complicated. You know, they go from this precinct to that, and it's different. So, so what we do with counties is if the county starts showing interest and wants to start moving down the path and chipping away at this, um, for instance, Knox County, um, is moving towards us this year, they're gonna pay us half next year and half in twenty twenty six, but we're delivering the panels for this presidential election at this time. So we have it. And so that's kinda the program. So, again, I don't know the county's finances, whatever, just wanna give you guys, you know, a good four-year window to, to absorb all this and see where you're at. Some counties prefer to do it sooner than later, but if there, if we see signs of strong interest in it, then we will find a way to get these panels in place for the twenty twenty six election year, even if that means spreading payments out over two or three years.
We have sixteen, or sixteen?
Yes.
And what was the number? Did they have one seventy nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, hundred seventy nine.
And that can be split in two payments, and?
Yeah. And, um, you know, so like, I would say that if this county was, you know, looking towards, and we're, we're way deep into the, by disliking all that stuff at this point. So if the county was interested in moving forward, say, get them in place in twenty twenty six, it could be budgeted in twenty twenty five for the first half and payment twenty twenty six, and then the second half in twenty twenty seven. But the panels would be in place in twenty twenty six for that election. And then we would adjust the warranty to extend out past, normally it's one year, one year of use or whatever, but in your case, it would be two years because the payment wasn't complete and extended. But really, that's, that's kinda the story, that's kinda the health check on it, and, and, uh, we, you know, we gotta have an exciting year after this year in the election. I think that, um, the county's done great things by moving vote centers. You have your advanced voting is absorbing a lot of the, um, a lot of the advanced voting, fifty percent. I think as a lot of counties are gonna be getting half the votes done before election day, which it takes some pressure off your vote center sites on election day. Our standard guy, Randy, I think will be back in the county, he can make this year for the November election, so he'll have the same support person you had for, you know, ten years. Other than that, that's all I got, this is it.
Are all Indiana counties using Microvote?
Uh, fifty nine. Fifty nine of the ninety two counties. And, um, by population and by vote count, we count just under seventy percent of all the votes in the state. We have, um, Marion County is not one of our accounts, but then after that, the next is, uh, if he goes to Lay County is one of our accounts, Fort Wayne, Allen County, Hamilton County, Hendricks County, Johnson County, um, that have somewhere between, like, Lay County has thirteen hundred voting machines they put out on election day. Uh, your, this size county is the sweet spot, the sixty to ninety voting machine size.
How many voting machines did we buy twenty years ago?
You bought, the, twenty years ago, it was bought by Hubble Fund, so the county fortunately didn't have, put any money out on that, it was paid for a federal grant. And at that time, they were calculating a weird ratio of, um, it was ten thousand five hundred dollars, I think, per precinct to supplement the county. And in your situation, I think you had more precincts than you needed at the time, and then you went to a consolidation, site consolidation before you leave the vote centers. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was more than this, I wanna say it was like seventy two or something like that, a little bit more. Uh, but now you have the appropriate number. The old ratio used to be you would take your registered voters and divide by three hundred and fifty, and then that would guarantee every voter to be legal three minutes behind the machine in a twelve-hour election, so they weren't being disenfranchised by the, by the county. Um, but that number really shifted down to about two hundred and forty now, because we're using, say, in your case, we're using eight or eight to ten machines for early voting, but we're getting thousands to three thousand votes on those machines. And so we're, the votes have shifted over, so you do have more machines in the field on election day than probably necessary, but it's a nice safety net for, you know, presidential election.
I guess that was where I was going with this question, was, was with my original question, looking at a units total there of sixty four, knowing what I know about the elections here in this county, consolidation of voting centers, uh, the downsizing of the precincts, um, we're buying sixty four for a twenty twenty six election. This thing lasts us another twenty years. Um, what number do you think we'll be to by that time? I see here this registered voters by three fifty, taking the registered voters by three fifty.
Yeah.
What's the three fifty? Just three hundred and fifty voters per machine?
Voters, yeah. That, that constitutes, if you got three, if, in a seventy percent turnout election, then that would guarantee every voter three minutes behind the machine. And now the law has changed on that. They've given everyone another minute. It used to be two minutes in the general and three minutes in the primary, now it's four minutes in the primary and three minutes in the general. So they, they changed that a couple years ago. It doesn't seem to have any kind of a significant impact. I haven't seen it slower speed up lines in the election. But I think your, I think your ratio, I think the sixty four is, is the appropriate number, um, because what your, if anything's gonna change in this county, most likely it would be the addition of additional early voting locations, or a satellite location that can move around a little bit, and they take, they take machines. Unlike your electronic poll books, these machines can only be used for one function or the other. They can only be used for early voting or election day, because they, the vote types are separate. They have to remain separate. You can't reprogram a panel for dinner voting for election day. Your electronic poll books are different, we can. So, I think, um, yeah, I think it's a good comfortable number, and, um, and it coincides with what the state bought you in terms of the number of units that you have. So let's say two years, four years down the road, you go, you know, we have six, seven units we're never gonna use, they're marketable, you know, for counties that are having higher level growth. As you see some counties like DuBois County, you're, you're starting to see a little bit of a growth influx, Knox County even. So, it's a, it's a value. And then the question comes up is how long do they estimate these to, you know, last all? So I see four-year time for this easily. But with this, it'll be different than your other one. I don't see the need for an intermediate upgrade to it. If there's any kind of changes that would take place to this, it would not be hardware, it would strictly be software or firmware, but you pay for those upgrades in your software maintenance agreement. So I'd like to think that, you know, over the last, you know, twenty years, the original shift was paid for by the federal government, and then we did that upgrade, um, which I would say was forty five thousand dollars, right in that range. And then, um, you know, then we have this, this cost here, that it should be it for a couple decades.
What's the, uh, what's the timeline on the, 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 the price of it?
Uh, the, the timeline are, we have a very long lead time on these, cause they're manufactured specifically for us, so that's usually a three to four month period. And then we take every machine, and people, Benji, who's with me today and others in our office, they take every machine, we load, Microvote loads the software, we load the software for them, it shows up. So that's another probably two to three weeks. Um, but if this, if it was a situation where if they came next August and you were on a budget for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven cycle, we would have all the time in the world to get them in place for the primary.
Four months?
Four months. Four months, I think. Be fair.
And those machines work with the case, it's nothing else we have now, nothing else besides this.
Correct. And then the state purchased you an additional, I think there's additional five or, five or six paper trail devices that were speakers that they bought for the lawsuit. I'm happy to say that that room worked out. It's tight, you know, but at the, at the same time, we did have to do much more than shelf adjustments and clear some stuff out, and it did have to have a bigger space for the different machines.
Do we actually use all sixty four?
Yep. We had, we used to, where they could keep some back on election day, and then we'd have so many each location. And then I came and I decided to tip all of them, just spread them around, and just have them out in the field. So instead of running back here and getting one, those have, they'll have an extra there, and those have, so if they have a problem, or they can move aside, we just have, we use all of them. It used to be, before you were vote center, we couldn't preprogram them.
Right.
We couldn't, we didn't know what they would be needing, but now we can preprogram them and have them sitting there ready to just roll out. Other than that, um.
I guess the software maintenance is already in the, uh?
Yes, yes.
So, Stuart, you just brought this to us so we can, uh, use it for planning purposes for, for the twenty whatever budget? Are you looking for the twenty twenty five budget to have some of this money in it?
I wasn't looking at that.
Oh, okay.
But I'd be happy to entertain it. That's kinda what initiated the meeting was, he said, you know, let's just get in front and get this out here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I appreciate it.
Don, same here. It's been a good, it's been a good run with you guys. I think the, uh, you guys are really, I mean, you guys were literally the first to report in the nation, um, which is pretty cool to have that monitor, cause you had your polls close in Cali before any other county in America. Very neat. So, we're doing something right, you know, we're getting it right, so. Other than that, um, if you'd, um, if there are any more questions? Right on? Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
All right, here's the sheriff. Good afternoon, council. Now we got. We've got several transfers here that we'd like to, uh, get done. We need to transfer two thousand from telephone and fifteen hundred and twenty five dollars, for a total of thirty five hundred and twenty five dollars to equipment. That's the first one. Do I hear all of them? Well, let's just take them one at a time, cause we'll vote them separately, so. Anybody have any questions on this first one? Motion. Jerry made a motion?
Second.
Mr. Brown seconded?
Forty five.
Thirty.
Thirty five.
Thirty five, twenty five.
There you go.
Randall seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Me.
The next one is we'd like to transfer seven thousand thirty seven dollars and seventy three cents from gasoline to vehicle repairs. Any questions? No, I've entertained a motion.
Motion.
Jerry made the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the final transfer that we're looking at is to take three thousand dollars from telephone to a training home.
Motion?
I don't know, I'm getting caught up here. I'm letting you get caught, I'm watching your pen now, so.
I know, I'm just like, you need to.
I'll slow down, that's my bad. The motion is to move from, uh, telephone to training, three thousand dollars.
Just to be on deal with the money.
That's fine. No questions, I'll entertain a motion there. Jerry made the motion? Second?
Second.
Ron seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next, along the general agenda, we'll advertise for two additional appropriations. The first one being, a check back from Green County General Hospital, in the amount of thirteen hundred and ten dollars and thirty eight cents. If you'd like to put that back into medical and hospital. Hey, for additional appropriation, reimbursement of thirteen ten thirty eight, medical and Now have a motion on that, or any questions?
You make the motion.
Motion. Ron made the motion?
Second. Go ahead.
Second. Randall seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And our last one is to advertise for nine hundred and forty seven dollars and eighteen cents. This is our Medco pays to go back to medical and hospital. Motion. All right. Medco pay of nine forty seven eighteen to medical and hospital. Any questions? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Me.
Ron made the motion?
Second.
Jerry seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good council.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Nate?
This is me, I'm last one left on the road. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
As most of you may know, probably know, we have had a, an audit for the ARPA funds, and, uh, we haven't gotten the public results of that audit yet, but, uh, so we, I can't share the results publicly, but if anybody wants to know it private, it's okay for me to share that. Uh, but the fees for that audit are going to be $6,000. So I'm here today to ask for a transfer for the, uh, the ARPA funding, or appropriation of the ARPA funding for the $6,000 to make that audit. It does not, it does not have to be advertised.
I'd make that motion. The additional appropriation from the ARPA, that state board counts audit, $6,000. Ron's made a motion? I'll second. I'll second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
And my next thing is, uh, last year's budget hearings, uh, the commissioners agreed to pay the stipend to economic development, uh, from the edit funds. We paid half of that at the first of the year, and, uh, we're here today seeking appropriation for the second half of that stipend for economic development. Heather, I don't remember that amount. Eighty thousand.
How much? Eighty thousand?
Yes, from the edit, and that would have to be advertised.
Any questions on that, or?
Motion.
Hold up there a second.
That jury?
Yep.
Yes, jury's motion, second? Ron?
Somebody?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Yep.
We're calling it a squeeze of clear.
Ready to roll? Are you ready? Pretty watching your pen. This one comes before the council for the additional appropriation for the president's stipend for Greg Rowdey-Bush in the amount of $4,1667. Any questions? Then I would entertain a motion. Ron made the motion? Second?
Second.
Randall seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Jerry, counsel attorney, do you have anything? I would like you to stick around just for a second after the meeting, if you would, please. Any other business before the council and the audience? And I would make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion.
Second. Ron, Ron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Very smooth.
Yeah.